Is our next person in line? Jesse is the vice chair, but we don't have a.
We do not have a third person.
No, I have a third person. Okay, so to do that, we're gonna have to make an uh.
Someone over there. It's called the railroad.
Temporary temporary chairman.
Yeah, in 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 lack of anybody else, I'll call the meeting to order for a public hearing, and I didn't bring my agenda, so. There's not much on it. No, I've got. So I guess there's no minutes or anything, so we'll just open the meeting for any public comments. There's no public in the room. We have one online. If you have anything to say, this is your opportunity. Okay, hearing none. Discussion around the table, I guess, is the next order of it. I do have one question, probably more than one question, but in section three. It says, no buildings shall be used and no building structure shall be erected, altered, or enlarged, which is arranged, intended, or designed for other than one of the uses in section four below. Section four below says, one, alternative construction housing shall be on permanent foundations. And two, single-family uses and single-family structures permitted under the parent district, of which the AH district is made apart. So I don't understand how the design for other than one of the uses in section four below would apply. If somebody said, okay, I'm gonna put something on a permanent foundation, that would be one.
One of those, yeah.
Of the uses.
Yeah, that's kind of a clunky word.
Yeah.
So we could change that. A building should be erected, altered, or enlarged, which which is arranged.
Not to interrupt, but can you guys now hear me?
I guess the one is the part that's kind of hecking that up, right? How would how would how would we have changed?
Well, later on, don't we require the the foundation?
Foundation to be closed, yeah.
So maybe we just don't need one.
Okay.
And just say other than uses in section four below, in case in the future we want to add other uses.
You're not in section four, take that for one.
Take out the one at section four.
Then I apologize, I didn't read this over very well.
Sure.
Is is not a regular home allowed to be constructed within this district?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, a regular home would be, so what happens here is that the. Any any district where you can build a single-family house or any kind of residence would still apply.
Okay, thank you.
Strike that. I don't have the I don't have the strike capability on the PDF editor.
It's section four, number one.
Section four, number one, struck.
I wonder if because your computer is muted, that would be why we can't hear.
Well, there we go. Jesse, can you hear us? Can you can you say something now? Jesse.
She's texting.
Okay.
You guys couldn't hear me even with my Bluetooth.
Oh, it's gone too. One public person went away.
But a technical difficulty today.
So you have under number four, number two becomes number one, or what?
Yeah, yeah, number two would become number one.
So that's all it would be.
And it would just have one underneath that. But it wouldn't give you the ability that if you wanted to add something.
If you want to add something later. If you want to make it to where in a business district, you could build a commercial outlet in it, like which thought it.
Right.
You know, which I find more appealing than the housing idea.
Other questions or comments? Kind of kept as far as how we design some of this other stuff, the lot coverage thing, we we took from another district. Or one of our residential districts, height regulations are from a which just refers to the parent district, which is gonna be, most cases, forty feet. For R two, so you couldn't build more than a four-story home. That actually might be, maybe three, it may be three stories. About it, but it's part of whatever the parent district is, so whatever's underneath it. And the same thing with the yard regulations, because we do have different yard regulations. Signs, we have to address that every time, too, so. Parking and loading also kind of part of the same thing, where it's the parent district. Or if it's approved by the planning commissioner, the governing body. The changes we made down in here was, we deleted some of the language about able to set it having peers. And basically made it enclosed. Closed permanent foundations. Sufficient anchoring, yeah, number two underneath there. Sufficient anchoring capacity to provide stability against high winds and adverse weather conditions, which is wasn't the original, too, but we eliminated the option to put it on peers, essentially.
Like the ones that are out there.
It's like, so the ones that are out there.
Yeah, those are technically a permanent, no, they won't have to change, but those are on, those are technically a permanent foundation. Stilts or peers would be a permanent foundation if it's designed that way.
Because they're in the mobile home park and and considered as mobile homes, are they required skirting?
Not technically.
We we don't have a requirement for it in the mobile home park.
I believe so, no. Which is very common, but I don't think that is actually when we have. It's a common one, though, because we used to have that.
Yeah, we had that.
Couple couple places.
When I lived in a mobile home in Texas, we had that.
Get skirted.
There, Ben had said something about if they're putting two or more storage containers together that are required engineering drawings. That's someplace else that does not need to be in here, correct?
That is the building code, yes.
It looked like their intent was to put two together.
Yes.
At least with our current.
Precisely, yeah.
But he mentioned the height thing, and I got to thinking if somebody wants to make a two-story.
Right.
Something like that.
Hey. Good shirt, but anyway.
I also had a question on section eleven, paragraph five.
Okay.
It says, if the proposed alternative construction home uses recycled building materials, sufficient information about the origin of the material must be submitted. Building materials, in that sense, does that include the container itself?
Container or in the case?
Because I would normally think of the container as a building supply.
Well, if you're making.
Building material.
If you're making it out of a container, I believe it would fall, at least how we attend to us, it would fall under that.
And we don't. We don't really state a purpose for, we we kind of hint at a purpose, but we don't actually state the purpose for the origin of the material to be submitted. It says sufficient information about the origin. I'm I'm not sure is, if it should state what the purpose of that information is. So the person wanting to do it has an idea of what sufficient is.
Yeah, sure. So you could, that's, you know, how.
I mean, if he's using used wall switches, you know. What is sufficient information for a used wall switch, as opposed to, I think it as the thing kind of indicates, it's for environmental purposes, and we know that it's it's directed toward the container itself. But I didn't know if that needs to be clarified a little bit more, or just left like it is and let Ben take care of it.
You certainly could put some information in there. If you wanted a clarifying statement about it being related to health and safety, I think that would be fine. You know, we we weren't, when we were drafting this, we had a conversation about what what potentially could we find with something like this, and so it's it's kept a little bit vague on the intention that we we're not a hundred percent sure.
The future.
What it would look like.
Which I think is okay.
Yeah, yeah, we try to keep it succinct and, you know, the purpose, but if you want to add some some comments about it being for health and safety reasons, absolutely, I think you could have the attention.
While at the same time, I don't want to having said on the the city council down in Derby, when you put something in a regulation that says A, B, and C, then somebody will come up with a delete.
Right.
That is not applicable to, so vague may be better.
Welcome any any suggestions on that.
I'm good, I just answered the question.
This is when we kind of trust the building inspector to to be asking for the information, and they they would know.
Yeah.
Wow, and there's there's certainly some times when we would have to ask another expert in that, yeah, because we don't necessarily know.
Depending on what the.
It's something we're unfamiliar with, we may have to ask somebody else.
In twenty years, he knows, so, yeah.
Well, that's true, too.
What are the steps from here?
Okay, well, if you're you're good with that, and with that correction of removing section four, number one, what you would want to do is make an action to recommend this to move forward to the city council. That that would be the planning commission's part of that.
Okay, before we close out the public, since we now have a public.
You would like to say, or add questions you have to ask, or.
No.
We only have one other person that like disappeared.
On the overlay, what has been done with, you guys seen what I proposed to build so far, so what has been done? What's what's been placed in there?
Can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, hey.
Okay, sorry, Chris, I just got your text to try again, because Matt's computer was muted. Okay, perfect, I'm in.
Perfect.
I've been hearing you all along, okay.
Have you got any comments?
I wish, no, no, I don't, sorry. I was just gonna say, I wish the wind would quit blowing out here.
Here, too. So I saw something about siding and stuff like that on one of the paragraphs that you were working on just a second ago.
Pleasing appearance, harmony, adjacent land uses.
Each alternative construction home shall be cited in such a manner as to preserve the visual character of the neighborhood, which shall include provisions for siding, roofing, landscaping, and other side improvements, as well as off-street parking.
Yes, so how that would work is the site plan would be submitted to the planning commission, and the planning commission would determine, based on where it's at, what those kind of criteria would be. Because it has to mesh with the neighborhood, I guess, so. That would be the standard, is that it? Uh, what's the word? Rendering a proposed final finished appearance. No, that's not the right one.
It's paragraph four.
Oh, I'm in the wrong paragraph, that'd be what.
Section eleven, paragraph four, I'm sorry.
Right there.
Yeah. So whatever, you know, whatever the neighbor, the the idea here is it's gonna match whatever the neighborhood has. So doesn't have anything specific, it just says those things need to kind of look similar or be similar to what is around it, that it's not, not clashing.
Okay.
And it wouldn't come back here unless the building inspector had a question. I mean, so that would be a city.
So, yeah, once, once it gets, you know.
Part of the city's.
Well.
Right, I mean, you said go to the planning commission.
Yeah, the site plan goes to the planning. And there would be whatever those.
I see, okay, thank you.
Yeah, if you read eleven, section eleven, paragraph one, a long paragraph.
Yeah, I'm sorry, thank you. Oh, yeah, please.
So we won't issue a permit until the planning commission groups the site plan, which would.
Sorry.
So this draft essentially meet what he's requesting for allowing these homes to, if all things.
It opens the door for him to do that.
Right.
It would depend on the site plan and the renderings, because there's a requirement to do a where is that?
I mean, this makes it possible, or it allows for the.
A rendering of proposed final finished appearance of the home and landscaping. So all those things will be taken into consideration as to whether or not he's allowed to do it on a particular
occasion.
Site plan. And if that site plan is approved, then then he can press ahead. And it requires that his finished product essentially look like and be like the site plan.
You do what you say you're gonna do.
Yeah, do what you say you're gonna do.
So whenever you submit it to the site plan, let's say, today, we submit a site plan, when do we get it back to where you can actually start construction?
You mean, today, after this is approved by city council?
I'm just hypothetically, it's approved by city council.
Yeah.
How long?
Oh, yeah, we just have to have it at a planning commission meeting, so.
Which if it falls on the first or the fifth day of the the month, how long until?
Like, when's the city council meet again?
City council meets on the third.
Third, okay.
So if it's on the on the fifth, wait till.
Planning commission.
And it's twice a month.
Uh, well, it's once a month generally, but yeah, there's a little bit of time in there. So we can get everybody together to review it.
Are we talking apples and oranges here?
So once this first one is approved, right?
Okay.
And we we mimic the same thing on every one of those lots, we don't have to submit a site plan, it can't do, is that correct?
No, that is not correct.
Yeah, you would have to do a site plan for each home you wanted to do. You could do them all.
At one time.
Time. Say your site plans for this, have all these, that gets approved, then you're free to build those, whatever you want to.
Yeah, the the section eleven, paragraph one, a site plan shall be submitted to the planning commission for each alternative construction home, specifying all the stuff that you require. So it would require a site plan for each individual home. You can submit them all at one time, but you still gotta have a site plan for each individual home. Now, the overlay only has to be approved once, because you can do an overlay for any lots that you own. But the the site plan itself has, because the site plan is unique to each lot, might be different for a corner lot than another, it might be different for a house that's being built to an existing house, that kind of stuff, so.
You wouldn't necessarily have to come in, you could do them all once, or you could do, say you're just wanting to do, start with four, do those first four, you get halfway through the end, or if you close the end, you can submit site plans for the next four, just go right on that line.
And and to be honest, because this is so new, if you are using essentially the same site plan for each one, if you submit a site plan for one unit, and that goes through, then as you start construction on it, and everybody sees that, okay, everything's going well, it's being done like it said it was gonna be done, everything looks good, then a second site plan, I think, would go through a lot faster. So that might be your best bet, to be honest. The the site plan review has to be done only by the the planning commission, well, city staff and the and the planning commission, so it does not have to go before the city council. So it's just a matter of when our next meeting would be, which we do once a month, so. When we have, we're scheduled to do one once a month.
It'll be one once a month, unless there's not.
And worst-case scenario, if you turned one in, and and Ben said, yeah, it looks good today, and today is Friday, just after a Thursday meeting, the most you'd have to wait is a month. So.
A question on this, there's no timeframe on this, so it could be approved and then not be done in for five years. Is there a timeframe?
I think there's a restriction on.
Is that somewhere else?
Building permit is.
There is, okay.
Well, it can be extended, that's, yeah, it probably is.
But there is something that's out there already that has a timeframe. That I was waiting.
Yeah, they're not open. But now, when this, you know, this has to be approved first, obviously, but yeah, once it's approved, then you're up to, when you give it to Ben, how long it takes him to do this thing, and then he can present it to us at the next meeting. And, you know, when he says, okay, it's ready to go to the planning commission, if we've got a meeting scheduled, that could be the next day, because it does not require a public hearing or anything like that.
Not for the site plan.
Not for the site plan.
It would for the district.
Yes.
That would require a public hearing, but.
So you're talking about two meetings away.
Yeah. To get the district applied, is you go through the normal process of zoning, essentially, so.
What's the, what's the district? The overlay dis, excuse me, the overlay district that allows you to build, use the alternative on other zoning, over other zones.
So right now, you guys are creating the overlay, it's going through planning right now, and it goes to city council.
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Yeah, well, assuming, yeah.
Yeah.
Right. Then you would have to apply for the zoning overlay, which you can put all the lots in. And we'll do that process, and then then you, after that's approved, then you get to the site plan part, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? This is your opportunity.
I know, it is. Have you looked over this and read it? I have not, I have not.
Ignore my little inscriptions, there's only a couple on there. We did make one change, and that's, you know.
One of section four.
Yeah, section four, cross off.
Section four, what, number one, the ones out.
Number one goes away, and number two becomes number one, and in the sentence above it, you take out the word one.
Yeah.
You expecting some other public, I was curious.
No, I, the only one I had, in conversation with the first is and that was comments on Facebook, it wasn't really calls or anything.
I think a lot of people is just not knowing, or just unsure, because they're.
It's different.
Yeah, different.
I don't think anything different, it takes a little bit of warming up.
Yeah.
Well, there is an open house, it was, I was in the paper, and if people had questions, they should have just went over there.
Get some, I was there.
A lot of people that came through there, but it's, it was none of the ones that had questions. So, you know, it's
Yeah.
That's kind of frustrating, like, come out and see.
Yeah.
Yeah, how's your chance to come out and see?
That's what I did, I just wanted to see first, how was it like? You've had some bed and breakfast business there now?
There's been a lot, so there's stuff checking in today, tomorrow, and Saturday, and it's going good, I mean. And people are, you know, they're here because of the college, or
Right.
You know, their kids in the surrounding area, I think some lady saw it from Newton, her daughter was playing at Bethel, and she said that she wanted to come stay up here because of that, because she's never stayed in a shipping container, so it's bringing people. To here.
Well, I, when you said it's fifty-five, and I.
Yeah, it's fifty-five.
I'd do that for a night if I was.
I know, I've gotten there from. To come up here, and I'm like, you're right down the road, but they're like, I want to stay in there.
I heard an empire stayed there.
Really?
Oh, really?
I heard one of the empires said that they'd stayed there, so.
Yeah.
One of the college teams.
And so far, we've gotten nothing, but it says it's.
Prices. What kind of motion or whatever we need?
Give him a chance to finish. Since he's the only one that really cares.
That's right. Gets concerned or something. The city staff feels this accommodates.
Yeah, I think it's given an opportunity for this. And it says this up, you, you know, other things in the future, if they should come up.
The click made it, all right, so you could, like. Oh, that's what that is, isn't it? I learned today, it's me. The edge.
Yeah, they literally had to.
The check sign, you know. And then I have to keep it, because it's.
Is there any update on the controversy between Bethany and Kansas, was it on the table water?
So, yeah, I'm gonna go back to this section four about single-family use.
I was just waiting.
The zoning for those properties are up to a duplex, right? Okay, does this allow, I know it's a single family, but does that still allow duplex-type structures on that?
Would.
Okay.
If that's part of the underlying district.
Yeah, the, yeah, when it's talking about a single-family unit, it's talking about the living unit that is designed and for one family, not two families living and sharing one kitchen.
It would be the two containers together as one family unit.
Right, and if you put two more next to it, as a duplex, then that's a separate family, a separate living unit.
Okay.
Yeah, they don't want to, they don't want a dorm.
My people living together.
They don't want, they don't want a dorm or a a boarding house, like, situation, so it's
Gotcha.
Single-family unit. Grandma comes and stays for a few months, grandma get away with it. She moves in permanently, you better hope nobody asks. I get away with mom with dad.
If your grandmother was the one.
Okay, you got any other questions?
No, just the the origin of the the materials for the container.
Yes.
What all containers come from China, but is that what you're looking for?
What they're looking for is making sure it's not been used for toxic material or anything like that.
Got you.
That health and safety-wise, it's okay to use.
Okay.
So they're more interested in what's been shipped in it.
Yeah.
Opposed to. And then and then as far as the testing.
What kind of testing are you guys, would you guys?
I bring up, what I would envision there is if the container has been used for some type of toxic or otherwise dangerous material, it would have to be tested to make sure none of that material residue stayed in the the container.
Or if you don't know, then they may test it for.
Yeah.
And
If there's.
Where, what company does that?
There's a couple of environmental engineering companies we've talked to that can do it. Um, you have to kind of know what specifically you're looking for, and so that's where. Having information about the container, what's been in there is required, so that you can say, okay, we, it had. What, what it would be in there.
Purchased it with history or.
What's that?
You purchased a container with history?
Well, I only, yeah, I've only bought my containers from one site and it's a pipe and cable company. So their containers come in with pipe and cable, and after they offload them, they dock them and sell them to me. So.
Probably wouldn't be any issue with pipe or cable, but if somebody brought in. I don't know, kerosene or some, I don't know, what else?
What would be in on it, you know?
We use all kinds of really costly stuff.
Have a container that has, say, heavy metals in it, or.
No, it could be.
Something like that, you know, I just, I don't know.
You'd wanna check, you know, any, any permeable surface there for those metals or whatever. Carried in there, so they don't carry over into the construction.
That's what helps to know what was in there, so.
Chlorine, for instance, chlorine bleach, and something punctured some of the containers and the chlorine soaks into. Whatever is permeable in the thing, then you'd wanna check and make sure that the chlorine wasn't still, that kind of stuff.
Yeah, or that it wasn't at a toxic level.
Yeah.
So there are a company, we did find a few folks that can do it, so it's not something that's just a pipe dream.
Like Wichita or something.
Yeah, they're most, Wichita is one I can't see, lab as we use, there's one that's aligned too, is a lab. Just depends on what we're getting in testing, so, yeah.
But that's after you're presenting what was in there before, right?
Yeah, wouldn't, you wouldn't have to test everything. Just question about what it is.
Well, I'm just saying, if we, there's pipe and cable in there, we present. The manifest that showed pipe and cable in there, you're not gonna say, well, we want you to test out the chlorine.
No. Why would we do that? Logical reason to do it, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because I know that testing probably is very high dollar.
Well, probably not cheap, and again, it'll depend on what it is. You need to testing it, it depends on what we're testing for.
I, I, I don't think the city would be asking for any testing, certainly not our intent to ask for testing, that there's not reason to believe there's a problem.
Yeah.
You know, the vast majority of containers do not contain anything that. That would be, but now. You might be able to pick up one really cheap that was.
Not suitable, yeah, and that's, that's the whole reason why it's there is to avoid a situation where someone tries to. Slide one in there and then maybe shouldn't.
Yeah.
If they're similar type of containers, maybe one time, if, if they're all the same type of contents. Maybe it would be required one time to check if there was concern at all, and then. They wouldn't have to check every time if it was identical.
That'd be up to Ben. Okay, seeing no further questions or comments, we'll close the public hearing. And I would entertain a motion.
Well, we approve.
Alternative construction housing.
Yeah.
Changes. With.
With the changes, yeah.
You're moving to recommend to the city council they adopt that.
The draft that was, yeah. With the changes, yes, by all means.
And do I hear a second? All in favor? Thank you. The motion carries. Any other business before we adjourn? Any comments, right?
We will have a. A hearing for another conditional use on Airbnb or short-term vacation rentals coming up. In next month, so.
Yeah.
Will be happening.
Depending on the city.
Could be another one for that. So.
Well, then, meeting adjourned.
They, thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks for your work on this, so if they approve this, what we.